Great. Good evening. I'm Tom Jacobs and I'd like to welcome you to the Select Board meeting of the Town of Bennington. It's April 27th and I would like to introduce you to the Board. To my far left is Donald Campbell, our most recent Select Board member. Michael Keane.
Good evening.
And next to Michael, we have John McFadden, who is the Vice Chair.
Wow.
And Jim Carroll to my right. And we have two absentees that normally would sit there. Then we have Stuart Hurd and Linda Bermudez, who is going to take the minutes tonight. So we do have...
Would you like to introduce our guest?
I'm going to save that.
Okay.
Because I want to surprise the audience.
All right.
But I appreciate the opportunity, Michael. Could we all rise and together recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an interesting, if not long, agenda tonight, but in order to move things along, it's sort of in the form of a consent agenda. We have the minutes from April 13th, 2015. I'll entertain a motion to accept them or for any modifications.
Motion to accept as submitted.
A second?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify. Aye.
Aye.
We also are circulating the warrant. I think that has come in our packet. Again, as part of the consent, unless there are questions, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the warrant. Still moving.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the warrants? Hearing none. All in favor? The warrants are approved and ready for signature. There are a couple of liquor license applications for 2015. I'll circulate those. There's a first class renewal. I don't think we have to specifically talk about identifying individuals.
No.
If they are accepted and by your signature deemed accepted, we will proceed with the next item on the agenda. The next...
One question. My eyes are wandering here.
Go ahead.
It looks like you have two on your list. I may have one.
There are two new additions and I'll show you those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, circulate that one for signature, Tom. That would be the...
Yep, the one with the highlights.
Yeah.
And there were some late entries.
They came in late today.
Yep. And we also have the opportunity to offer a resolution relative to Women's Lung Health Week. This was initiated through the auspices of Michael Keane. And if, Michael, would you care to read the resolution?
I'd be happy to do that. As many of you know, I serve on the Vermont Leadership Board of the American Lung Association. And in light of the first full week, the second full week of May being Women's Lung Health Week, we wanted to read and approve this resolution. Whereas every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer. And whereas lung cancer is the number one cancer killer of women in the United States. And whereas the lung cancer death rate in women has almost doubled over the past 37 years. And whereas advocacy and increased awareness will result in more and better treatment for women with lung cancer and other lung diseases and will ultimately save lives. And whereas Lung Force is the national movement led by the American Lung Association with the mission of making lung cancer history and uniting women to stand together with a collective strength and determination to lead the fight against lung cancer and the fight for lung health. Therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board of Bennington, Vermont hereby designates the second full week in May as Women's Lung Health Week throughout Bennington. And we encourage all residents of Bennington to learn more about the detection and treatment of lung cancer dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 27th day of April 2015 by the Select Board of Town of Bennington, Vermont.
You will move that resolution?
I do move that resolution.
And is your second?
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor of the adoption of that resolution signify and so be it adopted.
And thank you, Select Board, very much. I'll sign and Donald will sign and you can pass it on.
Great. Thank you very much. This is the opportunity at the time for citizens to comment. We have a 15-minute maximum for this part of the agenda. So if you have a comment or a participation that you'd like to share, we need you to come to the mic, identify yourself, and then suggest what you have for a topic. Go ahead.
My name's Lyle Westcott. I reside in Bennington. I know you guys introduced the Catalyst Program, but I had the opportunity and filed a Freedom of Information Act with the Bennington Police Department. Heather, the cops have been at 308 Pleasant Street from April 1st last year to April 1st this year 37 times. Now, 326 Pleasant Street, they've been there 60 times. So that's a total of 97 times just between them two buildings. We've got to crack down on the slum lords. That's why with the Catalyst Program, I would ask that you mandate to do criminal background checks because the guy at 339 School Street has, keeps violating probation and parole. The last year, he assaulted a 15-year-old girl, busted her lip open. This landlord keeps renting to him, knowing and putting our kids in danger and our community in danger. He's got numerous violent acts that he's been convicted of. And if we have the mandatory criminal background checks, like the state Section 8 does and the Town of Bennington, Penny Taylor does criminal background checks for all Section 8 people. And in Willowbrook, now she cracks down in there and Brookside. They don't have the police present like the brother and sister do or do have. If we mandate that they have to do a criminal background check and if they don't evict them, do like you did with the fire department. Make them pay for the police presence, have them to be there, so we can get it under control. Now, that's not counting, they've been at Hawks Place five times in the past year. Okay? They've been at 801 Main Street. They've been at 317 Pleasant Street. They've been 629 Pleasant Street twice that I know of. Okay? That's not counting the days that I'm not in town, that I don't catch everyone. But the last month and a half, on the weekends, they've been to their apartments three times. The one weekend was four days in a row. The taxpayer shouldn't have to keep footing the bill because he doesn't care that he's putting us in danger. He's putting our police officers in danger. If you ever get an opportunity, go over to 326 Pleasant Street at nighttime. The way that building's designed, I don't know if we got gang members living in there. But either way, if we get someone that's swatted out on drugs, they could turn their outside lights off and ambush the police. And that's my number one concern, too. You know?
Have you talked with the State's Attorney, Erica Marthich, about this situation?
Yeah. She says, "I'm the DA. I can do what I want." And they're slapping the criminals on the wrist. And that, I'm working on that as well. I'm working on a state level, too. Now Burlington, what Burlington did just a couple months ago, they're giving slum landlords a year accreditation. If it doesn't improve in a year, they shut them down. If they improve, then they give them a three-year. Now, the ones that aren't slum landlords, they get a five-year accreditation. But if they don't clean up their act within that year, they shut them down.
That would require an ordinance, as you know.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. You could do it.
And we, you know, we've heard from you before and I think we can certainly look into that, but there are certain limitations on our ability to enforce, but we want something that can be enforced.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Make them pay for the police presence.
Yeah, well, you know, that's certainly an option that we can consider and I think that's an appropriate idea to share. Stuart, do you have any reactions or thoughts to Mr. Westcott's comments?
Well, as you know, Pleasant Street is the first neighborhood that we're going to be really focusing the Catalyst Program on. And we'll be doing some sidewalk upgrades and road repairs early in the season. And we've also begun conversations with the landlords there, trying to get everybody on the same page as to the appropriateness of managing their properties well and keeping them well-maintained.
Are you starting to see some responses that are more appropriate and affirmative in that context?
Well, certainly the landlords are willing to work with us. They've expressed that willingness. Obviously, there are times that people act out regardless of where they live. And unfortunately, this neighborhood is one of our highest priorities. And that's as far as I'm going to...
Question. Yeah, I just want to compliment Lyle on his thinking about adopting a similar ordinance with respect to, you know, false alarms. And Stu, could we do something similar to that? And, you know, not necessarily, well, pass it on to the landlords and then let the landlords make a decision about...
I think there could be an issue with state laws as far as renting goes because a landlord might want to do something but won't be able to. Unless the state gives them authority to effectively remove the tenant, then we're going to be penalizing them for something they can't react to.
Yeah, I think the city of Burlington probably licenses their apartments.
I believe they do.
We used to do that years and years ago. We don't any longer. So I'd have to take a look at what they're doing up there and how this program is working to really understand whether or not it's something we would want to undertake. And so that would be my answer to you, Jim, is we need to take a look at what Burlington's doing and try to understand it.
We're not going to disregard your comments and...
Yeah, I appreciate it because I'm looking out for public safety. I've been in 40 states, lived in six, and I know, and I've been where real McCoy gang members are and drug addicts that are wiped out on this heroin and meth. They get violent when they don't have it.
Okay, listen, yeah. We appreciate your comments and we'll take them under advisement. Thank you, Mr. Westcott.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other citizens? Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Dave Crowley. I wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your prompt and considerate response to my request a little while ago about putting up some warning signs about the, at the crosswalk at Dewey and Weeks. There are two warning signs there now. And thanks. Thanks for doing a nice job.
Has that improved the situation? That's a $64,000 question.
Not for everybody, but, you know, I got all the grease this squeaky wheel's going to get, I think, right now. I'll keep at it.
And, you know, the police know that that's a problem area, so I expect that they would spend some additional time and resources to at least show the presence.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak? Not having any additional ones, now it's my pleasure to introduce our guest, Michelle Pilcher, who's with National Hangar. It's what called, what's it formerly?
Nahanko, short for National Hangar Company.
There you go. Thank you very much. She's been kind enough to come and share some comments with us relative to her business experiences in the Town of Bennington. And you're basically, and hopefully, going to be one of the first to share your experiences with us. And we don't want to gloss over if there are concerns or something that you do not feel are being addressed. Again, share them with us because we're here to assist and make sure that we have a vibrant community with businesses like yours. We can, if not assure and guarantee the public of that, it'll go a long way to making it even a better community. So without further ado, I'm going to allow our, Michael Keane, to do some introductions and talk about some of the programs that Michelle was involved with.
Right. I think this is very opportune for us. We on the Select Board have talked for a while now about the possibility of bringing in business leaders, business owners, on a regular basis, not at every Select Board meeting, but on a basis where we can become familiar with them, they can become familiar with us. And we, and citizens who are listening and watching, can hear firsthand their concerns, their issues, the advantages, the problems, as Tom might say, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I'm particularly happy that Michelle Pilcher has been with us tonight. Michelle is the President of National Hangar Company, National Hangar Corporation, Nahanko. And you are a career employee, are you not?
Yes.
Absolutely. I want to talk about that. Back in December, Michelle presented to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, of which I'm a member, on behalf of Nahanko, and received, the company has received a VEGI incentive, a Vermont Economic Growth Incentive. This is a fairly, fairly customary type of program that many states have. In our state, that program provides a cash incentive that's paid from incremental tax revenues generated when a business that receives a VEGI develops new jobs and makes capital investments in its Vermont business. The cash payment, the cash incentive, is made only after the new jobs are developed and the capital investments have been made. It is interesting to note that some of the businesses, in addition to Nahanko, that are in the VEGI program today are Commonwealth Dairy in Brattleboro, Green Mountain Coffee Roasters, Revision Eyewear of Essex. Revision Eyewear makes ballistic eyewear for the use of the military. And Cabot Hosiery Mills in Northfield. Probably one of the things that is key to VEGI is that since VEGI started in 2007, VEGI companies, companies that have been authorized to have Vermont Economic Growth Incentives, those companies have invested close to $187 million in new qualifying payroll and $495 million, let me say that again, $495 million, that's about a half a billion, in new qualifying capital investments. So for me, it's a pleasure to introduce Michelle and to ask her a few questions. Tell us about the company. I'm interested, and you'll know why. How did the company come to North Bennington? Where did it come from? What do you manufacture? Who are your customers? What's your objective with the VEGI incentive? Makes sense?
Okay. It makes sense. If I miss anything, I'm sure we'll catch it on the end. I'm a visual person. I am. I am the President of National Hangar, and I'm sure everybody has driven by many times and thought about the wire hangers, hangers, and the tubular hangers, which we don't make, okay? We make the plastic hanger that you see, that you probably bought your jackets off of, if not, the wooden hanger. But we're in all of the department stores that you bought your product off of. So, ooh.
I just want to interrupt for one second. I owned retail stores, four of them. So I probably had 20,000 or 30,000 of those plastic hangers.
Yeah. You're never enough when you need them, but, so that's the type that we actually have manufacturing. So just want to throw that out there first. I've been with the company for 29 years. We've actually, this is our 90th year in business, so we're not a new company. This is our 35th year in Bennington. Again, we're not a new company.
And you moved from...
Yeah, we, here I just brought some catalogs, just in case you want to share them. So you can see what we do. We started in Brooklyn, New York, in 1925, a family-operated company. In 1980, we came to this area off of Vermont Bonds, actually, to buy the Green Mountain Furniture Plant, Cushman Furniture Plant, at auction. And so we've been here since 1980, manufacturing and growing our business slowly through. We are a leading manufacturer in the plastic hangers. As I said, we have injection mold machines. We're also a major importer of other stock plastic hangers, of wooden hangers. We directly import everything a store needs to operate, which you'll see in our catalog. We import racks and tagging guns and lid rollers and everything that retailers need to operate behind the scenes. Shouldn't know what they are.
Number for mold rollers.
And so, yeah, so we import everything our, well, not we import, we manufacture here. We have a large distribution. So, and our factory is set up so that 70% of it is manufacturing now, 30% is distribution. And our top customers are the likes of Macy's, Victoria's Secret, Eddie Bauer, Abercrombie and Fitch Limited, Under Armour. We just worked the contracts with Under Armour. They're going to start, they're starting to do a national program and really expanding. And you'll see their brand house stores, and we did all the custom work for them in those, in those stores. So we're much more than the hanger company down the street.
You also do business with China and a number of other countries?
Yes, yes. We have manufacturing partners in China that import some of our products, that manufacture some of our products because it's easy to tool there, much easier than to tool here. So some of the smaller projects we have done over there, we partner with some of the labor intensive hangers, and we do a lot of custom work. And a lot of the custom work does come from China.
What does that mean to tool?
To make a mold, like this needs a mold, a mold to make it. And so to make, to tool the mold is to make the hard part of it, the metal piece.
John can help you with that.
Yeah. A mold of this size, in our factory, we have cavities, we have about 10 cavities in a mold, so it's a very large mold. And so to make one of these for the U.S., it's about $50,000 to $75,000 for each tool. To make one in China, they make them smaller because the labor rate's less. You know, we try to make as many out with each shot. They can make a two-cavity mold or a four-cavity mold and they can turn it over for $3,000. So when you're, when you're making new molds, it's sometimes beneficial to have it done there.
Sure.
However, in our factory, we do have CNC machines and we can cut our own molds. And so we cut them from old molds. And we've actually bought out a lot of our competitors along the way. So we have a lot of raw material, shall we say, of their mold basis that we can use to retool. So that's how we do that. We have in-house, I'm just sort of veering a little bit, many types of jobs because this is our main plant. So we have the sales jobs, the manufacturing, the tool and die makers, supply chain specialists. We do all customization in-house where we print on the hangers, we print on size dividers that you see in the stores. And so we do that in-house, too. We have all this base to the retailer. So how this works into the VEGI is we came upon the epiphany that we're really good at wholesale, but we're not really good at retailing ourselves. And so Jim probably doesn't even know who we are, and we're his neighbor. So we said, "We need to get our name out there to the Millennium users, the people that Google and the people that need to find, 'Hey, I need a lid roller,' or 'Hey, I need a rack.'" And we're not really good at that. So part of our whole VEGI program is that we're going to promote ourselves as the retail source on the web for the Millennium users. We have, we don't have to invent who we are. We have the product, we have the stock, we have the knowledge. And so we're using this to invest in IT investments with webmasters and marketing and creative design people. We're using this to increase our product integrity with packaging specialists and supply chain keynote people. We are also, what this will do, besides take us on the spade, our plan is it'll increase our footprint. We'll be able to expand into buildings that are nearby or in the Bennington area because we're going to need more distribution space. So, yeah, we're taking a company that's been here, a long track record, and we've got some really good growth plans. And only with the VEGI help with the way we laid it out is it really going to make it possible for us to do this. So the part of what VEGI means to us is it's going to enable us to really grow into the really good footprint and the really good company that we know we can be. We, what we need from Bennington, and I know I skipped a couple things in there, but...
You're on a roll.
Yeah. Is, I've been recently speaking out more because we're one of the companies that's been here and we've weathered all the storms in Bennington. And it's really important that Bennington and the leaders of Bennington know who those companies are that are here that employ. And we employ 125 people. We're one of your top employers, and we're very little known about us because we're the hanger company. We have so many things we do, and our average workforce, number of years of seniority, is 12 years. So we're a well-kept secret there.
You have good retention there.
We have excellent retention. And thank you. That's one of the things that Vermont companies need, is we have to grow our own. It's not like you can go out and get people and solicit them and get them to come and work here because it's a challenging place to work. You know, there's not New York City. There's not the hubs of things. There's not, you've got to really like this area, and most people like it when they turn my age. But not when they're younger. So it's called grow your own, and you really do have to grow your own people. And Bennington needs to grow their own businesses. They need to really recognize their own businesses, and it doesn't really happen. And so it's just sort of a look in your own backyard and see who it is that's making you who you are. And at the last meeting I went to, there was a saying that was really good. Dance with the one who invited you to the dance. Time helps.
What kind of jobs, again, would you be hiring for? And where are you going to source the applicants?
We are, we are hiring for, in year one, we're hiring for, and we're doing a pretty good job starting this off, creative design. And we solicited the Massachusetts area, actually, and got someone to come up in. We have marketing manager, webmaster, and we're reaching out to the local colleges and trying to find people that just graduated from the area that like it, that want to stay in the area. I've worked with Bennington College recently. And so we're really trying to look at the recent graduates or the new, recently displaced workers. But it's a, it's a really great gem that a lot of people don't know about, and we, on our part, haven't gone out and talked about it a lot because it's easier to stay under the radar and just focus on what's good for us. And so if it's not in our best interest, we just sort of look away and just keep going at what we're doing.
Can we ask some questions as we go along?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Just looking at your catalog and recalling my days in New York, do you have any retail locations in the city? Because there was one place, I swear, that I could have bought everything out of it right up near Penn Station.
Oh, yeah. We just sell to those distributors. Yes. We sell through distributors and we sell direct to retailers. But this is our only location, and this is our only warehouse. We have, if you've driven by, you've seen, there's fairly massive warehouses we have there.
So it's mostly wholesale that you do?
We sell wholesale of these products to distributors, but we sell direct to retailers. We sell direct to the largest retailers. And, but the, there's distributors in sections, segments everywhere that we'll sell to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on one of your previous comments, something that you were looking for the Town of Bennington to do, and that's to reach out to your company, understand the value that you bring as a large employer of this area. I think it was probably last year, Michael actually had developed a list of our larger employers. And the idea moving forward is to send out surveys to our employers in town so we can try and get that feedback from you guys and connect, bridge that gap. So it's important to hear from you that you want that, that connection, because some people could blow us off easily. And a lot of the work that Michael's putting in could be for naught, but it's good to hear that you're looking for that connection as well.
Oh, absolutely. And I think I still have Michael's letter.
Oh, there we go.
That said he was going to reach out to us. So I've kept it.
Good.
Just to say.
No pressure.
No pressure. There's a date on that letter.
Keep the pressure. Other questions?
Tom? Donald, do you have a comment?
Would you need some for your closet?
I have a couple of things I'm interested in, but number one, of the things that we might be able to do, are there things that we could be doing besides this one thing you've mentioned that would be helpful or that would bring down barriers or that would somehow make the business run more smoothly?
Well, I think just getting the word out about the company and what it does and that it's a valued asset to the Bennington community is part of it. I mean, we've had just, you know, the back old days with the Benmont Paper Mills, and I've been here through everybody. Everybody's been here and everybody's gone, and then somebody bright, shiny, and new comes in, gets all the attention. And I actually had one state representative be brought to my facility, one, I think two in my 30 years I've talked to, none from Bennington. But, but came to my facility and all of a sudden was getting the, because they had to get across that Bennington Microtechnology Center that opened across from me. That's big. So I think just getting the word out there that, hey, yeah, we know the company, if they're, they've got, they've got, just a good word on the street. Because a lot of times people go, "Oh, the hanger, those people over there." It's, that's the good, bad, and the ugly is we've had go-arounds with job service. Oh, you don't want to go work there. It's really not ready to do it. So we're trying to get those barriers down. And so it's just a matter of knowing who we are and that we're here and we're an asset. And, you know, that's, that's the simplest thing that can be done.
Michelle, relative to the VEGI application process, did you find that onerous and how did you get into that, the stream relative to that application? Why and how?
Well, actually, I was coming up with some growth plans and thinking what we wanted to do. And so the two people I called first is my accountant and my banker. So to my accountant, and he said, "If you're going to do this, there's plans for this that can assist you." And gave me the information... And gave me the information to make sure I looked up the Veggie application, Veggie grant. And when I went to the bankers and the same thing, they said, "Yes, you can do this. There's state programs that will help." And so, that's how I got turned on to do that. And I came back immediately and looked it up and said, "This is probably a very good thing for us to do." The whole process wasn't that difficult. I mean, it's very thorough, but the way that they've got it all set up, Fred Kenny up there, there's assistance and it's very thorough and very easy to follow. So, I didn't find it encumbersome at all.
So, and you have 11 people really scrutinizing the application. So, to one state senator, one state rep and nine of us citizens representing just about Erie County in Vermont. We put the application through the wringer. I have to say about Michelle, this is the way Michelle presented to us at VEPSE. Some people come in with these long, with all due respect, dry presentations, came in, talked this way, she knocked our socks off. And it was just, it was such, it was a pleasure.
And I was even with a camped sock guy at the time, so I knocked his socks off.
That's right, yeah. And we tried to come away with those socks.
They were darn good socks.
Could you, this is sort of an aside, but how many applications do you see from the Great Southwest relative to?
I can tell you that the complaint that all of us have, and this is people from Wyndham, this is people from Lemoille, this is people from everywhere except Chittenden, we want to see more applications from southern Vermont. We get on average about 35 applications a year. And, you know, getting reams and reams of paper and spreadsheets every time you're up there. We meet once a month, takes a while to go through the information, but I personally would love to see many more applications from southern Vermont. It's probably double the number of applications that come from Chittenden County. It's no wonder, I mean, everybody goes there. And what we are trying to do in VEPSE is at least get more recognition for anything south of Route 4. So, we really do want to see more applications from the southern part of the state.
And those applications, where would they come from? From the businesses themselves or from BCIC?
They come from the regional corporations. Well, the regional corporations representatives essentially market this and bring it to their clients who are looking to expand and grow and some clients that are looking for a reason to stay in Vermont. Really, the three central reasons why we have Veggie are to bring businesses to Vermont, help them grow in Vermont, help them stay in Vermont.
Well, it's the same thing, we just put Bennington rather than Vermont.
Exactly, exactly. So, we'd like to see, we'd like to see a lot more, there's no question about it. At this point, you know, I'll digress for a second in terms of folks east of the mountain, east of Hogback, because they're losing Vermont Yankee and they're losing 600 odd jobs. We're all trying to find ways to get more business in there. At the same time, I don't want to forget our own county and this part of our own county where we need that. I'd love to see 10 more of the hanger. One last question, did I answer your question?
No, yes, you did, thanks, go ahead.
One last question, what are the skills you're looking for in the new jobs that you're bringing onboard?
Well, they're dependent on the new jobs themselves, but some of them are like junior accountant, we're going to increase, we need, with the web and everything that you're doing with reconciling PayPal and all the different forms of payment, it becomes very encumbersome. So, we need that, we need the web technology developer so that way we can really maintain our website and use it. We're actually developing software that's custom-written for us by a doctor at Siena College that's going to really help us to promote our website, promote it the right way, the products, it's really going to do a lot of analytical work up behind the scenes, which is going to be really, they're more excited about than I am, so I'm sure it's a really good project. I just want to see it to work, but it's going to be, it's going to be really good. So, it's a variety of people. And as we grow, we still need more machine operators and the other level of jobs because we're still producing in the US. The product we make, you can't make in China any less because it's not high-tech, there's not a lot of product. It's something that you can make in the US and continue to make in the US and even as things go, it's going to be even harder to import it, it's best to make.
And we're always going to work clothing.
You always have to go to try it on. I mean, the internet is there and it's doing well, but it's still retail clothing, you still have to go and try things on. You might buy it online afterwards, but you have to go touch and feel it.
Our suit man over here.
Michelle, if you care to, what is your starting pay scale? What benefits do you offer? I think that might be helpful to the people who might be looking for work and want to think of you as something other than the hanger company in North Bennington.
Well, it's a variety of positions. The positions we're hiring for now, the marketing, the webmaster, they're all at $40,000, $50,000 plus a year.
I'm thinking about the general operations people, the people who make.
General operations, we start at $10, $11 and $12. So, it's in that range of the starting wages and then they go up from there. Some of them are bonus rates and so, they add on bonus from there. But, I think we're at a competing wage with our neighbors around us. But, molding is generally about 13, assembly is in the $10 range. And the benefits are, we have health insurance, it is heavily subsidized by us. Thank you for the, all the government regulations. We have death and disability, that's no cost. We have life insurance, we have 401K with matching on the first 5%. We have, you know, some extra holidays other people don't have because we have the day after Thanksgiving. It's always a given because that's when we get to rest because everything's in the store for Black Friday. That's when we work right up to Black Friday and after that, we build inventory for the next year. So, I probably missed a few things, but we've got the full package of benefits.
That's a pretty attractive offering.
We've got a retention rate that's really there. The turn rates we have are the entry-level machine operators and, by the way, we have a lot of those that have worked many years and they are excellent workers and perhaps in another situation, they would not be an employee somewhere, they perhaps would be on state assistance. Because we have very little prerequisites for them to start. You don't even have to read. You don't even have to really know how to count. We can teach them what they need to do and we can put them to work. So, we have several employees that are on state programs that are assisting us and have been there for a while. Lenny Bell is in North Bennington, I think everybody's seen him walk around and he's been with us. I think he reminds me every day now for 20-some years. So, we have a great crew and we have a really good camaraderie and family there, but we haven't shared it with a lot of people. But, our retention rate sort of tells the story.
What's your annual payroll?
Our annual payroll is about $3 million to $3.5 million that we put into the economy every year.
That certainly tells a story.
Yeah.
Do you ever do open houses or do you ever, is there ever a time when the public can come in and see what you do?
It's not open to the public in general, but we've offered tours to different organizations to come in. So, some will and some have not come in, shall we say. Some we've reached out to, like the Department of Labor, and they've chosen not to come in. But, we definitely would set it up for any organization that was in our best interest to show them what we do. Senator Walsh, is he a senator? I should know this, but he came down, which was great. So, if we have the right reason to show our place, we'll show it. Otherwise, we are pretty tight-knit. We actually just had the Chamber of Commerce pushing us. Apparently, there's a movie being taped and the company needed to have a hanger factory to do this film production because it was for this documentary about a hanger that competes with ours. And so, they tried to reach out to us heavily and we said, "No, thank you," for obvious reasons. And then they went to the Chamber of Commerce who called us and pushed us heavily, Joan, Joan. And I had to reply and say, "We are going to decline because we are the only hanger manufacturer they could find in the US, by the way. Not going to promote a competing hanger."
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you, Michelle. Go ahead.
I actually have one last question. This goes back to, you said 35 years ago Vermont bond brought you guys here?
Yes.
And then, you've used the Veggie program recently, actually now, right?
I applied for it and got approved and I'm submitting my final application within a month or two, but yes, we got approved.
Through your time at the hanger company, have you reached out for other statewide incentives, tried to reap the benefits of those bonds?
Absolutely.
Veggie programs, whatever it might be?
The last growth period we had, we reached out for the VPAC and got those economic incentives. And that was probably 15 short years ago, maybe 20, I can't remember, but we built the buildings that we have. And we got help from them and from the other state organization.
And when you were looking for the Veggie program at least, you had mentioned that you got that information from your accountant?
Right.
Is that your primary source of reaching out and trying to look for those programs? They're always changing. Every year, there's new programs out there, but would your accountant be the best bet? Was there any consideration towards reaching out to the town of Bennington and asking what might be available or using them as a resource? Or was it not thought of? I'm not saying that we necessarily would have been a resource, but if we aren't thought of, then we have to take that active role in connecting with you, just like you said, so.
Right. It was not thought of that there was any opportunity in Bennington and I was not, I'm not in the loop with some of the group. And I've been in this group for a while and dealt with BCIC and some other companies and it's been a long road, shall we say.
Yeah, no, it's not easy.
I've come across some walls along the way, one being female and two being with the hanger. So, it's been an interesting haul, but I didn't have the thought to reach out to the town of Bennington because...
Not necessarily for assistance, but for an understanding of what programs are available. I think that's something we'll want to have in a folder to say, "Here you go," just like your accountant was able to.
Yeah, I think that would be really important and the BCIC should have that, that they give to each of their, you know.
I think it's an opportunity for us as the town of Bennington to make sure those dialogues happen. That's why we'd like to have other businesses come in as well.
Thank you, Michelle. We really appreciate this. Very informative and education and every time I put my coat on the hook, I'll think of it.
And every time you drive by now, you guys will know. But, should anyone would like a tour?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
We're going to take about a five-minute recess. Really helpful discussion. And I think it's just the first of a number. It's not something that we need to schedule every meeting because I think it would be self-defeating, folks would lose interest. But, it would be helpful if the members of the board in the town identify businesses that might have an interest in sharing their experiences. And that doesn't mean it has to be the largest employer, it can be a small employer, just to share where they're at, what their hope is and how we might fit into that. And as Michael said, the idea with the Veggie grant, and I think it's broader for us, is to recruit, retain and enhance. And anything we can do in that context is going to be helpful. So, I would encourage any ideas of companies to share them with yours truly or Stu and then we can get them on the agenda. So, again, thanks for that startup. The next thing on the agenda, as I recall, if I can open my program here, is the Select Board Rules of Procedure. I think in the packet, there was an outline, a discussion form for that procedure. And the purpose of that was so if adopted, we can have a reference point that will guide us, we on the board and also will help the folks that come before us to know that there are certain expectancies of both the board and the participants as to how we're going to be conducting business. And the purpose is to maintain a quality of business atmosphere so that the folks can be heard, but it's done in a clear, concise and staged process. But, I welcome your comments tonight or, and I think, well, again, we need to have a couple meetings to make sure that everybody's on board, then we can move to adopt them. And these can be amplified upon or changed at any time. They're not, nothing etched in stone, but I look forward to having your comments and critiques along the way.
When would you like our comments?
By the next meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting. Any immediate reactions or thoughts?
I like it. I thought it's well-written.
Do you think it would be helpful?
I do, I do.
I think as a whole, bringing the structure to these meetings is, like you said, it's going to allow us to do what we need to do on a, do twice a month in a way that we haven't in the past necessarily. We've had some contentious debates that didn't necessarily have to be debates. Really, everyone just wants to be heard, so bringing this structure to a meeting even when we have those contentious.
Discussions.
Discussions, right.
Appreciate it.
Valuable. So, I like the way this is laid out so far. I think it leaves us open to those changes and adjusting our meeting times where necessary and making those adjustments.
Good.
All in all, I think it's looking pretty good.
Great. And then, let's get back together with your comments again. Feel free to email them to me and we can get that on the next agenda so that Sharon and Justin also have the opportunity to reach in on it.
So, Tom, you see this as being something that's going to go over several meetings? It's not a first reading, second reading type thing?
I don't think so. I'd rather have it really thought out.
June out for a while.
Yep, because there's nothing magical about it. You know, there's some timelines that I put in based upon experiences and observations, but the board may feel that that needs to be shortened or enhanced. Because, and I looked at that as the possibility of even during a discussion, we may want to amplify and go beyond the agenda so that if the board decides, it can, as a collective group, increase that timeline. Purpose is just to, so I just like, something I can have a reference to, both from the chair position and also as a participating position. That's hopefully what we'll get out of this exercise. Thanks for the time. We have the Economic Development Fund Program first reading that Mike Harrington is going to get to us.
Good evening. We've talked about this at a couple different occasions, really to build the program description and just to give a little background for the public. The idea being that we had a micro-loan program that was somewhat redundant and inactive, hadn't been used in a few years and doesn't necessarily impact the loans that came out of that program or the loans that we continue to give out through our revolving loan program, but chose to freeze that account or dismantle that account and are looking at different ways to invest that to enhance our economic development impact in the community. One of those ideas that this board, I think, has taken a great interest in as well as the staff has been the idea of creating some type of catalyst capital fund that can be used for different efforts in economic development. And so, what you have in front of you, I've been able to meet with each of you either one-on-one or in a small group, grab feedback from everybody in terms of comments or questions or changes. So, what you have in front of you, being our first reading, is really the program with everybody's thoughts involved in it. And then, we'll look to bring it back at the next meeting for final approval, but I'll answer any questions or comments that the board has now.
Go ahead. Would you remind us of the amount of money that would be thought to be currently available and how much the, let's call it the ideal sum might be?
Well, currently, we're at about $150,000. I think depending on the impact, obviously, that the board would like to have in terms of its ability to invest in different projects or programs, that level of funding changes. But, I think it could be anywhere from half a million dollars to a million dollars. It really depends on whether or not you're looking to be major investors in redevelopment projects or simply be able to provide seed money to get a project to the implementation phase. And so, our ability, and I think this program does a great job of outlining the fact that it really has to have a strong impact and return on investment, but the investment could be of almost any monetary denomination as long as it's moving the project forward.
Thank you.
I have a few sort of fussy questions for you. First of all, thank you for taking the time to meet with us individually and also, it looks like a great program. I'm really excited about it. I think it's going to be great for the town. So, these are more along the lines of, I'm just not quite sure what you mean. And the third paragraph down, when you refer to this as an internal program, as opposed to an external program or what do you, how does that help explain the program?
Yeah, so, the idea and the conversation and the feedback coming from the board was to be able to have this in our toolbox as a community, as a municipality to use, as a way to incentivize economic development activities. And so... And so really, the comments coming out of here were creating a fund that could be used at the discretion of the board and the staff collaboratively, as opposed to having an open application process where essentially anybody could fill out an application and present it to the board. That doesn't mean that if there's a project out there that someone thinks qualifies, that they can't come to the town and work through town staff to present a comprehensive proposal to the board, but in a little bit different fashion as opposed to our loan program where essentially anybody who's willing, as long as they meet the minimum requirement, can apply, and it's up to the board to determine, you know, its desire to move forward on it.
So it would be very strategic, proactive investments?
It's very strategic because it really is meant to hit on a number of different factors that come out of the town's planning documents, including the economic development plan.
Excellent. Thanks. I also wondered about, in the fourth paragraph, if you could give some examples of what ancillary initiatives that encourage local efforts might be. The first part of that, local initiatives that have a direct impact on the town's economic vitality, seems great. And the second part, I'm not quite so sure what.
So it could be something that we support at a statewide level, at a regional level, or even in surrounding towns like North Bennington, where there's a project that even though it may not fall within the direct community in which this select board serves, if we felt that the impact of such project would have an impact on our community, then we could see it as a possibility for a project. So it could be, again, it could be funds to support a project, to be an investor in a project. But again, you know, the follow-up comment is making sure that it has a direct impact back to the community.
The local efforts, right? Okay. Right, great. And the last thing, Michael, I guess on the second page, where you talk about the initiatives that attract and retain key businesses and professionals, and that involve one or more of the following, this is a great list, this one through seven, and perhaps I should have said it when we met, but it would be great to have these seen as enhancements, and so maybe it's as many of the following as possible as opposed to one of the following. If a project came through with three or four of those things, it would be a wonderful thing.
Michael, we'll go right down the line here. Do you have any other questions?
Just going back to Donald's point about the internal program, that third paragraph, what that really says to me is, yes, strategic, but also programs that obviously have a number of moving parts, they're not going to be simple. They're going to have a level of complexity that this type of fund should be able to supplement.
I think you're absolutely right, and what we've seen in other communities are projects that really span multiple years and usually involve anywhere from half a dozen to a dozen different investors, including multiple different funding sources. So you're right, it's very, very complex.
John?
Yeah, just looking, I mean, I've shared most of my opinions with you, if not all of them so far. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of what we're going after here. I know when I first heard you speak of this type of program and trying to move funds, what I wanted to keep in mind was a specific goal for the town, and like Donald said, I think your list here is great. And I'm wondering if we were able, if we announced that before, or if we brought that to the public, what this list is of what we're trying to accomplish?
Why don't you read those? That'd be a great idea. Because it's basically, I think, the comment that Donald was making is, it's not one to the exclusion of the rest, it could be a combination of any or all.
Right.
But I think that's a good reference point because it sort of cuts to the chase of the program.
Right. So number one, and there's no particular order here, facilitate public-private development partnerships, implement the Bennington Economic Development Plan, are innovative and creative, create multiple benefits for the community, increasing the number of jobs, increasing incomes, promoting community development, demonstrate sustainability and profitability, involve strong local management and expertise, acquire, redevelop underutilized or vacant and blighted properties within the central business district and designated growth center. So this is what we're trying to chase down when putting in this program. And we're hoping that we'll have an initial investment, somewhat large, at least in my opinion. And one of the other key aspects that we have to focus on is how we sustain this program. I'm not sure if we necessarily identified that completely yet, and I think it should be understood that this is still in its infancy, and that's one of the things we're going to have to focus on moving forward. There needs to be a dedicated resource to supplying new funds to this program, even if we're not using it every single year, so that it can continue to grow and become a more powerful tool. So then when we have companies come sit at our table and say, we want more jobs, we want to invest in Bennington, they know that, Michael, and the rest of the town are going to be a valuable resource.
Well said, John.
I just want to, you know, this is a great blueprint. It really is. And this gives us, maybe license isn't the right word, but it gives us certainly a framework with which we can identify goals, much in the same way that St. Albans did. And I think we should seriously start thinking about big ideas that we should pursue within this framework. Now is the time.
This is a tool. This is a tool to that end, and it's going to be a good tool for us.
The bottom line is, we've said it before, if a community is not willing to invest in itself, why should an outside investor do it?
The comments have been really good, because I checked down the ones that I was going to comment, and you've already done that, going right to John's comment about sustainability. I think that's really good, because this is basically seed money. And when you have seed money, you don't want to throw it out in the first round of the spring season. So we've got to come up with a way to enhance the investment that this community has got to make in itself, and so that this gets to be a sizable program and a tool that we can refer to to enhance that investment with the big ideas or even the small ones.
I think the evaluation piece, which is on the last page too, is going to be really important. So having some kind of metric by which you can evaluate how effective these grants were, but not just evaluate, also be able to communicate that so that we and the public kind of have a sense of what our money was, how effective that money was. So it says that in here, but I think that'll be, it doesn't give a lot of details because obviously you have to formulate that still. But that'll be interesting to see what you come up with on that.
One last comment, at least from myself. Looking at the examples of projects, I think that can also lead us to what we want this fund to amount to, where our biggest bang for our buck is, it might not be $100,000. It might be when you break through at the 150 or 200,000 mark, you start to see exponential gains from the number of jobs or whatever grants that you might be able to get with that money. I don't know, whatever might be available. So as a side project, obviously, you have enough to work on, but to gain a better understanding, not just for yourself, but for this board and for the town, of what we want that to accumulate to before we necessarily dip into it. I mean, projects are going to look good. There's a lot of good that's happening in town. There's a lot of people, citizens, organizations, trying to do what they can to improve our circumstance and hit those seven. But we also have to make sure that we maintain our cool when all these good projects come along, if there's an end goal, I guess. And so I don't know where it falls right now, but it'd be good to understand.
It might be, not to recommend our group if it's not appropriate, but the recruitment and retention group from the Bennington Economic Development Partners may be a good group to explore what that tipping point is, and also may be able to develop, you know, a handful of recommendations on how to make the fund sustainable, you know, and bring those back to the board as, you know, three or four different options on ways to continue the fund over a period of time.
I see the program, once it's adopted, the next meeting or two, that will get a basically a pretty routine report on what's happening with it, so that we know that it doesn't become just a place to deposit a seed, but what we're thinking about doing so that it stays vital and dynamic.
For me, it's always an obvious point. This investment always involves a certain level of risk. So we, as a board and we as a town, go into this knowing that some things, we're going to do the due diligence that we can, we're going to do the reporting and the performance reporting, but there's always an element of risk. No risk, no reward.
When you plant something, it doesn't mean it's going to come up. I can speak, I have experience.
Mr. Greenbaum.
Right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Believe, I've gone too far. We have a proposed amendment to Article 25, the Bennington Water Sewer Regulatory Code ordinance, first reading?
Yes, thank you. This has actually been recommended by council as part of our discussions and agreements with Southern Vermont College in how they pay back their proportionate share of the Rob Wilmington felt that amending the ordinance to allow them to pay it as part of their water sewer fees presented some, one, an outline and a benefit to the college, but also it makes it essentially part of the lien on the property through the real estate tax, water sewer fee situation. So the wording came from Rob, and it was something that he felt we needed to do to address the fact that they will be paying us back on an annual basis. And in order to make it happen, we need to adopt and amend the ordinance as presented to you. Obviously, this is the first reading, and we will be back next time to present it for approval, like any other municipal ordinance.
It looks to me to be helpful because basically it becomes an underlying lien on the college's property if they fail to pay. It's a lot easier to enforce that than going after them. So it makes a lot of sense.
Correct. It does make a lot of sense. I agree.
Stuart, are these terms of art, kind of special benefit and equitable portion, are those things that need definition in this, or is that, does that get over the top in terms of legal? If Rob Wilmington wrote this, it's probably...
Since council drafted it, I would have the sense that those terms of art are pretty much standard in the language and in the law, and I wouldn't think we would need to add definitions to explain what they are.
It feels just a little bit vague in terms of who decides and how would disputes be resolved, but maybe that's somewhere else in...
Because it's a select board ordinance, the authority rests with you folks as to who you decide to partner with under this particular section. This would be perhaps recommended by staff, but ultimately, it's the board's decision to do it in this manner. Other projects that might not be quite as large as what we're contemplating with the water tank project in SBC probably would not use this section as effectively as the larger projects would, because they can be...
Okay, I understand. Sorry. So the board would decide then, the special benefit and equitable portion part would come to the board?
That's correct.
And in the case of a dispute, I'm sorry, I don't know this, I probably should, but what would happen at that point if somebody felt the board was deciding unfairly?
While that's an agreement that an individual or a corporation would be making with the board, if the citizenry is not happy with that particular agreement, they can dispute it at a meeting where it is being discussed because it would have to be in action in open session, but there really would not be an appeal process. It's simply an agreement that the board is entering into with a particular entity and is not subject to a court challenge necessarily unless somebody, there's a partner or another business that is aggrieved by the action in some form. So it's not that it's subject to appeal, but certainly it would be subject to review in an open meeting.
Any other questions, concerns? First reading is completed, and wait for the next one, which will be next week's...
Thank you. We'll have it on the next agenda, yes.
Stuart, would you like to?
The only thing of interest here or of note, and I'm going to pass down these colored maps, Don Campbell was kind enough to send that to me today to help illustrate. We have a quick claim question that is coming before us. I wanted to highlight it tonight. We would have it as an agenda item at a future meeting, should the board decide to go forward. And this has happened in the past where rights of ways or easements were laid out for a particular subdivision years ago, years ago. In this particular case, Short Street was envisioned to connect to a street called Booth Terrace that would essentially connect then to Hamlin Avenue and up onto Imperial Avenue. The street was never built, the easements were never turned over to the town, yet they still exist and are described in some of the deeds that these properties now incorporate. Although it's not a deed at easement, the description tends to exist. In this particular case, the Gothier property, which is the L-shaped property that ends up connecting to the upper end of Short Street, is literally cut in half, and you can see how the, there's a road that has been cut up through there to access the rear of another property. It is not a public right-of-way because it was never turned over to the town, and the Gothiers are asking, if in fact the town was interested in doing so, to quickclaim any interest it might have in this particular property. We've done this in one other area in my 22-some-odd years here, where there was a subdivision that existed, the lots were never built, people now owned the lot in its entirety, yet they were on the map, you could see where streets were laid out. And the goal in order to secure clear title to the property was for the municipality to step out and quickclaim any interest, say, we're not interested in any of this property. And it helps clear the title of any vagueness that might exist, and that's what the Gothiers are asking us to do here. There would be a deed that would be signed by the manager, should the board approve, quitclaiming any of our municipal interest in this land. We've never, we've never used it, and as you move to the east, on this particular east and south on this particular line, and you can see the curved line of those properties, that grade gets very, very steep as you try to come up that hill, much as it is as you come up Hamlin Avenue. So would there ever be any desire to build a road through there? Probably not. So I don't think we're at risk in losing any rights we may or may not have to this particular property if we proceed with this quickclaim activity.
Could you identify the Gothier property on the...
The Gothier property is the L-shaped property that you see here. It fronts on Fairview and then butts to the top of Short Street. Can you see it there, Tom?
Yeah, I see Short Street and...
And you can see where there's a, right here, this is the property, the Gothier property. And you can see the scar here. This individual has used that easement to access the back of his particular property. And he has actually had a conversation with me about whether or not it was a town right-of-way and whether or not his rights over that would be damaged, should the town quickclaim any interest. And of course, you know real estate law better than I do, any prescriptive rights that he may or may not have would not be damaged by our, quitclaiming our interest. And in fact, there is, in an adjoining property deed, some comment about the fact that rights that were given when the subdivision was granted will remain in perpetuity. So I don't think this damages his situation, but it does clarify for the owners of the property that the town is not interested in developing any kind of right-of-way up through there. I know this property very well. I had a girlfriend who lived on Booth Terrace, and I know the road or what amounted to a road, and it was virtually...
a road, and it was virtually impassable 30 years ago. I don't know what shape it's in.
It's pretty much overgrown now. I mean, if you can drive down through there, you'd, good luck to you. I mean, Fairview Street itself is incredibly narrow. When you get up onto that and you're really riding along a ridge line, properties fall away from you very quickly and rise very quickly on the other side of the road.
Any other initial reactions from the board?
But I appreciate, Don, what you do with this.
Yeah, this is very... Well, yeah, I was interested. Thank you for your email on that, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't giving up any potential public access easements that might benefit the town, or possibly making it into, instead of being a dead end, making it a loop for fire services and whatnot. And Stuart assured me that it was all too steep, and this backs it up. Even if, even if you did have this road come out to here, it would end at this lot anyway, pretty much in this person's backyard. So as long as we don't feel like we have any rights anyway, and we're just helping clear title, it feels to me like a neighborly thing to do.
Very good. We'll put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, and, you know, if there are folks that have an interest, they can speak to it, they certainly can, when it comes up on the next go-around. Otherwise, we can pursue into our authority, convey that, release that interest.
And I have one other announcement, Tom, that was handed to me this afternoon before coming to the meeting. This is more for the public. May 11th through the 15th and May 18th through the 22nd, we will be doing our water main hydrant flushing. We'll move probably east to west throughout the community. If your water becomes discolored after flushing, leave your cold water run until it's clear. Not your hot water, your cold water. You don't want to bring the silt into your hot water system. So that's for the public. Thank you.
Other business, other comments, and I would just go right down the line, if you'd like to share observations or otherwise, now is your opportunity.
Just, thank you very briefly. I'd like to share a little bit of sadness, and I know a lot of people would probably share this with me, for the families of Kelly Bowe and Richard Tom, who are the two bicyclers that were recently killed while on recreational rides. And so these are friends of friends of ours, but I didn't know them personally, but I felt like it's just probably worth saying that our roads in Vermont are narrow, and it's dangerous, and it's springtime again. And if anyone's out there riding and they find roads that are particularly dangerous, or road conditions that are particularly dangerous, to contact Stu Hurd and see if we can do something about it. On a much more positive note, May 2nd is the first day that the Bennington Farmers Market will be outdoors again. So it's been wonderful being in the church all winter, but the Farmers Market will be back at the Riverwalk Park, and we hope the entire community will show up and get some good fresh food.
Great. Thanks.
Two things. We talked a bit about the veggie program today. There is an article on the front page of today's banner about some of the changes in the veggie regulations that make veggie more amenable to areas of the state with higher unemployment, so that we can move out of Chittenden County. Secondly, I did want to remind you about a warning for a meeting, so that we can go through performance metrics with the select board, Saturday meeting, whenever you want to have that done.
Okay. I'll take that. John?
Just referring back to what Michelle had said, I think it's key to have the programs that are available, not just to small businesses, but all businesses from Bennington, from the state. And I'm not sure what packet is available right now, but I'd like to see something developed. I don't know what organization should be doing that development, but I think it should be readily available, so employers around the town don't have to ask their accountant for ideas. They can give us a call, and we'll say, "Here's your folder." I don't have a necessary due date to that, but I'd like to see something in the works. Next, again, going back to what our speaker said, having a survey to our employers, I think we might want to draw a line in the sand for that one. I don't know what due date we should draw, but we've talked about it for almost a year now, and I think it's appropriate to land on some goals and dates.
Here's a suggestion to that. Maybe, just like we had for our evaluation process, you know, a subcommittee get together and orchestrate the format, and you can share that subcommittee.
Okay.
And report back to us within the next couple months.
Absolutely. What I'd like to do, a little different from the last committee, since it was, the last committee was an evaluation of the town manager, at least it started that way, so it was important that it came from the select board. What I'd like to do is make sure that, Michael, you're part of this subcommittee. I think it's important to have your involvement, your knowledge of what we're talking about is some that we don't have as board members. So I'd be happy to be part of that. Hopefully, Michael will as well, and then anyone else that's willing to attend.
Are there any volunteers?
I'm ready to go. We've been working on stuff. We may as well continue to do a good job.
And we have room for one more.
Jim?
Chair, this is Jim.
Yes, go ahead.
I suggest Bill Colvin.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's actually the beauty of, you know, our quorum problem. We can invite as many of, as many other people as possible. So I'll reach out to Bill.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you need additional resources...
Sure.
Go ahead.
That should be, should be more than adequate.
I think it's a really, it's a good tool, because it's an attempt to reach out and get feedback. Because frankly, I'd like to see that throughout the community, not just businesses. This is a good stepping off to get our immediate customers known and identified and dealt with. That is really good, so look forward to keeping that on the front burner. Jim?
One last, sorry.
Yep, no.
Filled up tonight. One of the last things, actually, was in light of some of the events that we have been talking about over the course of the last month. Nothing specific about the events, but just how they transpired. And also, I think I read in the minutes from last week that Mike Bethel had wanted to, well, was looking for access to town property to put on some live music as well. I think there might be a disconnect in between citizens wanting to host events or put on events and how the town should work with them. I know that it opens ourselves up, if we don't have a set procedure on how to do this, to be made out to look like we are dropping the ball, when in reality, it just might be a circumstance that we're dealing with. And again, no particular event needs to be kept in mind, but I think we need to understand there's so many citizens out there that want to participate and be involved and bring some more vitality to this community. And so if they're looking to do that and they want to do that, we should make it easy for them and allow them to understand the process.
You know, at this point, we don't have an ordinance or rules or regulations, but I don't think it'd be helpful to the citizens or the town to just have an open season on it. I think, again, I hate to say it, but you'd really need a policy that says, "If you have an interest, here's how you do it," and have a one, two, three, so that there's a checklist, and we don't have the cracks that existed in this last scenario, which were going to exist, you know, everything from insurance to this, that. So there's a checklist, and I think we really have to develop that, and I would leave it to the town management to see if they can come up with that and share that with the board.
We are, in fact, developing that as we speak. We're going to be developing a new application form for use of town properties. It will detail all of those things you've just mentioned, is the organization, a formal organization, does it have insurance, you know, is the town named as an additional insurer, all of those kinds of things on it, so that, and we'll get that out to the public via the website, once it's fully developed, because you're right, it just seems over the last six months that we've suddenly had this slew of people who have wanted to do something and have taken upon themselves to decide to do it on public property without us knowing that they were either thinking about doing it or whatever the rules might be, because we have been used to dealing with organizations that have dealt with us before, the Chamber, the BBC, those folks who know the process, who come to us formally. And so we're going to, we've learned that we need to get out ahead of this and make sure that there's something in place that makes it very clear to people what they need to do, and that they need to be also qualified to do what they're hoping to do.
Three things tonight. First of all, I want to offer condolences to the family of Bob Madison, our former town manager. I think he was in office just before you. Didn't you follow?
Actually, no. I did work for him, though. He was followed by Jim Colvin and Kevin Ryan.
He was a great guy and a great promoter of the town, and I'll miss him. He used to come by quite frequently.
Run by?
That's right. Yeah?
At 91.
Hobbled at times. Secondly, there was an issue that came up about an individual, a town resident with his heart in the right place, who decided to go over by the Deer Park and spray paint some new lines.
Jim, if I could just maybe interrupt. Since it's really in the court system right now, let's let that play out.
Okay, I'll avoid that. All right, more to the point. What can we do about getting signs there that...
Signs, actually, there are signs on the Deer Park side. The other side, of course, is all open parking lots, so it's very difficult to place signposts there, because traffic is moving in and out of those two businesses on a constant basis. As I explained to the individual, we need to wait for the temperature of the roadway to come up, so that we put our paint down that will actually adhere and remain there. So crosswalks, in fact, if you were out and about today, you saw some of the stop bars being painted. We're beginning that process, and we're hoping that the temperatures continue to rise and not go in the other direction, as they seem to have done the last couple of days, so that we can get some of that work done. And I think that particular location and the one below it at the Veterans Home entrance really need to be done in the red with the white stripes, because they really need to stand out. You've got traffic coming off of Route 7, and they're moving at a pretty good pace as they hit that Tasty Freeze, and we need to be able to highlight that somewhere on the pavement.
That is, it's a really good point, that right now with the construction on the bridge, that traffic heading south, there's, it's really increased just getting out from Hunt Street onto the 60, onto the road, the main road, is like you can be there for a long time, so long that you turn around and you go make a loop on a gage and cut around. But that is, you know, a challenge, but people need to be reminded, you know, don't take your life in your hands to get a Tasty Freeze. We do have an obligation to make sure that there's at least a marked crossing.
And we actually are, as Dave Crowley had pointed out when he first came to us, there are some solar, flashing solar lights that are solar-powered, I should say, and we use them at the intersection of Elm and Dewey. They're red lights, but they also come in a yellow, and we're taking a look at what those would cost, so that we can identify those mid-block crosswalks that are really more dangerous than the intersectional crosswalks, and perhaps install a few of those to, so people see from a long distance that there's something ahead that would require caution.
One more thing about that area of town. Where's the dividing line with respect to town, roadway, and the state? Is it right about the courthouse?
It's just beyond the Tasty Freeze, in fact, so that the...
I thought so, because that's where most of the potholes are, just beyond the Tasty Freeze.
Yes, yeah, that, actually, that highway is state highway. It has suffered dramatically this particular year, and the pavement is peeled right off. I'm sure the state will react to that as soon as the time is appropriate, but it has made that road very rough.
Finally, the one thing that I want to do is celebrate my friend Natasha and Matt Latrell's inclusion in Yankee Magazine this year as the best bakery lunch in Vermont. So if you get hungry at most times, I'm sure Natasha would be glad to help you.
I believe they're also written up a bit in the Boston Globe Travel.
Is that right?
Yeah. We've got a lot of quiet but vibrant businesses, and, you know, the best way to enjoy it is to eat there.
That's it.
Thank you. I don't have anything really more to add, other than as creation of the agenda, I see that not as the chair's responsibility, other than to bring everything together. So if there are items on that you would like addressed or spoken to as an agenda item, please share that with me, and we can develop how we can get it on the agenda. Couple of things that I do want to see on the agenda, and I spoke to last meeting, are the bike and walking pathways, a process, I expect that's already being worked on, but I would like to see that on the agenda. And also, what we're going to be doing with our community parks, to make them vibrant, useful areas by the entire community, and I'd like to have that done sooner rather than later. Any other thoughts before I look for a motion to go into executive session for a contract matter?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. We are in executive session. Thanks for attending.